All right, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, there's the flag, turn this way, there we go, okay. You start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation under God, in his soul with liberty and justice for all.
You want, should we turn for a picture board?
Yes.
Okay. Want us to stand? All right. Can you get us in?
I can.
All right. One, two, three. I don't know where to forget measure. I can, I can send that to you. Thank you both.
Now we're going to sit here for another hour.
Well, you can stay as long as you want.
How about you?
I'll give you fifteen minutes.
We'll ask again. Yeah. If you wonder, then you're up at the.
No, that's okay.
Go on.
Sometime you'll have to come back in the day and we'll give you a little tour.
That would be cool, he's like, have I ever been here before? He said, I don't think so.
It's a pretty cool office. There we go. All right, roll call with numbers, please.
Trustee Trombley, trustee Malinsky.
Yes.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Mayor McFettrich.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October tenth meeting?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I'm staying.
Opposed, motion carries. And an approval for the minutes of the October twenty-third meeting?
So.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. Welcome, members of the community. Not, not to put you on the spot, but really appreciate the boys coming and doing the pledge. And to the public, this is a new effort that we're going to do, so we're going to invite or or have you call if your children are interested in coming to our monthly meeting and doing the pledge. So I welcome people to call the office and set that up. So do you have anything you want to talk about? That's going on in the village? Things you'd like to see? Activities?
Do you think, really young people?
Yeah, are there things that you'd like to see happen that we could maybe organize?
Like a parade?
Oh, a parade, yeah, there's going to be a parade of lights pretty soon. You know, the lit up trucks and things? That's gonna happen soon.
Like, there's gonna be like a hot air balloon.
Wow, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do like that idea.
He's coming big.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know.
More concerns, you know, do you have any concerns about anything?
I don't think so. We are in the process right now of purchasing our first home right in the village.
Oh.
So, congratulations.
Oh, Spruce Street?
Spruce Street.
On Spruce Street?
Yep, and Declan, we were talking about it earlier, said that he wants to live in this village forever. So.
We're, we're very happy to hear that.
This is where I'll be for the rest of my life.
That's awesome, yeah. Well, that's great, I'm glad you're going to be able to purchase a home.
Yeah, we're, we're excited, so. And it's perfect, I mean, I love our community, so.
Yeah, we're happy to see you inside. Can't see inside with our own eyes.
You have, wait, you have or haven't?
Have it.
The boy does have it.
Oh, the, you, you boys have not seen it?
Yeah.
Just the other side.
So we went and looked when they were at school, we were like, no. I thought they're touching everybody's stuff.
That's great.
Well, it's exciting.
Yeah, that's very exciting, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've done a wonderful job with additions in the village and I know that the ideas just keep blossoming, so I'm sure.
Yeah, and we're always open to ideas from the community, I mean, our best ideas come from all of you.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's why we want everyone, young and old, involved. So we really get these cool ideas. Like you did a lot down at the garden. It was really good.
Oh, you know what they were talking about doing? Do you remember when you guys painted at the fire station in Pottsburg? They did the big mural on the side of the wall?
Yeah, I remember it.
Well, you were really little too. But they're talking about maybe doing that on some of the buildings in the village. Would that be cool? Have art outside?
Yeah, could I go in it?
Yeah, we're, we're going to be looking for kids to come do some of the artwork on it, yes.
They lost the paint.
Yeah. Ideas like that, like different things that we could do. Make the villages or probably to think about, huh?
Well, you can come to a meeting anytime and give us all of your ideas. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And you're welcome to stay or to leave.
I want to stay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll pick you up.
Yeah.
I could stay, yeah.
We're gonna get going.
No.
We're gonna let them have their meeting. But I do know another mom that's interested, so I'll tell her to call them.
Oh, yeah, I'll tell her to call the office. That'd be great.
She's out for it.
That would be fantastic.
Can I just be soft?
Yeah. That'll look, that'll be so cute.
Thanks so much. It's so nice to see all of you.
All right, you got your jackets?
Yeah, stay warm.
It's snowing a little bit.
I know.
Then it's gonna be fifty, this weekend.
Bye. Hey, at least don't be bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, report from the Cogan Police Officer, um, you do have that. It's short. I would say basically that he has been tied up with a few ongoing issues that take up most of his time here. I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of these. I know they're all being dealt with slowly. All right. Um, this is my report. It's also short. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees meeting. Winter will be upon us soon, or maybe it's already here. And please remember the no parking ban on the village streets from November first to April first, between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Also, a reminder to remove garbage cans from the sidewalks as soon as possible after collection pickup, so that the sidewalk plow can get through safely. I'd like to take a moment to thank those of you who have made suggestions for community activities, actually, just what I was talking to the family about. Last night, we had a Listening to Vinyl event, which was organized by Jen Mallory. And later this week, Mike LaFontaine is going to speak about his project of tagging monarch butterflies. Events like these are free and offer an opportunity to socialize and meet new people. If you have a topic you would like to propose, please let us know. Question?
No.
The annual holiday fest will take place on Saturday, December ninth, at 4:30 p.m. at Pocket Park. Santa will be handing out gifts to all the children. There will be free hot chocolate served, and the tree lighting will take place. Please come join this fun community event.
4:30, yeah?
4:30. We had to set it up with Santa.
Well, no, that's, he's an important.
I thought that was the most important part.
He's the important dude.
Yeah, and he's, he's a busy guy. Um, I extend best wishes for a happy Thanksgiving to all. May you be blessed with good food and great company. Let me remind you that there may be neighbors who are alone this holiday. Reach out to them to share food and a visit. That small gesture may not seem important to you, but it could make a world of difference to that person. Thank you. Reports from the trustees, Chuck?
I don't have anything this month.
Okay. Nikki?
Um, let's see. We had our annual Halloween pumpkin decorating contest at the library. Thank you, Janet, for coming and judging. There were some really creative pumpkins this year.
That's for sure.
Um, I believe we had twenty-three. So it was a nice turnout, it was quick. Um, so that's what's happening at the library. Uh, we are also looking for some interested citizens who would like to join our board or the Friends of the Library Committee. So if anyone is interested, just give the library a call and leave your name and number and we'll get back with you and let you know more. Um, December ninth, Kids Connected is holding the Children's Christmas crafts at eleven with Letters to Santa, and we'll bring back the little tea party. So we'll have little snacks and hot chocolate and tea. And at twelve-thirty, we will hold our annual candy cane hunt.
That's Saturday?
Ninth, same day as Santa. And that's all I have on my list for now.
I will mention that you talked about the Letters to Santa. I did put the box out on the porch of the meeting house, so if anyone who's watching this wants to drop off Letters to Santa, it is out there now, and I'll make sure that they get delivered to Santa. So, um, but come to, come to the event on the ninth as well.
And what time does your event start?
Eleven.
Um, Kim?
Um, I really don't have a lot, the water board report is slowly turning. Ongoing process, um, so I'm, I'm hoping to have it done this week. Now, it's just a matter of, of kind of getting everything in there. It's hard when you only do a report once a year.
Yeah.
And you're trying to go back and the girls know I always have questions, like, so.
It's a lot.
It, we're getting there. Um, the other thing that I had, I know this past summer with the garden plots, um, there wasn't quite as much enthusiasm, enthusiasm about the garden as in previous years. It maybe ebbs and flows, but I had a thought, and it kind of goes along with what you were doing at the library. If we didn't have a lot of people that were interested in doing plots, what about planting pumpkins?
We did that.
We tried that one year.
I, I plant pumpkins every year.
And they don't, do critters eat them?
I have, yep, that's how it starts out.
One year we were successful, because I have a picture of like twenty, twenty pumpkins.
Oh, not when I've done it, then.
Yes, one year, I remember that. Because it seems like every year, five pumpkins season.
I have had two small ones one year.
Two?
Two, oh, I have two. That was like two or three years ago.
Oh.
I had about five or six two years ago.
Um, but yeah, a lot of times critters eat them right away.
Oh, when they're tender?
Yep, um.
Because I was thinking.
Or then, like this year, because it was so rainy, I never got down there and the weeds took over. I mean, there, there were plants, there were vines all over, but nothing produced.
Because I was thinking that anyone is.
Interested in taking over that job, go for it.
Not I, I'm trying to get rid of my own home garden.
As far as the garden, Janet mentioned, and to me, we were talking about eliminating the garden by having maybe, um, the raised beds.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And charge a fee for them.
Just a small fee.
Right.
Yeah.
As compared to, and, and just make that look nicer than it is.
Yeah.
It, it, it.
We can't see.
It's easier to manage, I, I think. I mean, I don't know, I, I've never done anything there because, you know, we have our own garden at home and we have a raised bed garden, um, but that might be easier for people. It's off the ground, so if, you know, if you have joint issues or whatever, it's easier. So, yeah, that.
And that's what we should try.
I think so too, just.
And have the youngsters do some artwork, maybe.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
That was just, that was just my thought, because I know that you didn't get a lot of people that participated in the garden, so it's like.
And just the rain was so bad.
Well, yeah, it kind of rotted a lot of the garden.
Right on the bottom.
Especially all the squash. I didn't get any squash at all this year.
Really, and I, my squash at home did really well, it all ventured out of the garden, onto the rocks and out into the grass and.
It sure as hell probably drained down out of the beds.
Yeah.
The raised beds.
That's the difference.
Yep.
I think we should try that. Yeah.
Got to be cleaned up first.
Yeah.
The one that came and talked with me, she said that Pottsburg does that. They have the raised beds. And I think they put gravel or hay in between each bed to cut down on the grass in between.
Oh, okay.
Um, and the money that they charge goes to maintaining or getting the dirt and the hay and, yeah, whatever is needed to maintain the area.
Something we should work, we should work on the plan over the winter.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, yep.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, report from the Clerk Treasurer?
Um, everyone has their expense revenue reports for October. It looks like we're pretty, pretty on for our five months, uh.
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
Yeah, yeah. Does anyone have any specific questions about any of the categories? Okay. And then we have additional invoices?
Additional invoices for the warrant of nine thousand seven oh five sixty-five, for a total of warrant of sixty-nine thousand four twelve eighty. But as you see, that forty-four thousand of that is retirement.
Yeah, it's always such a huge chunk.
Yeah.
Yeah. And may I have a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices? You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Did you print this in red, because these are things that are owed?
No.
Like, we're in the red.
No, no, no. I found the pen, I was playing with the little thing when they printed them out, didn't realize I clicked on the red.
They were trying to send us a message. Look at everything you owe. It's a lot.
It was eight.
So no questions from the board on any of this? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye.
Um, we also have invoices for the water project and wastewater project. The water project, we have invoices for twenty-two thousand five sixteen fifty, Barton and Le Judas.
Let's take that one first, right?
Yeah.
We have a motion to pay this, the water line replacement project bill.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye.
Okay, so in the wastewater treatment plant, we have three invoices for a total of two hundred ninety-eight thousand eight twenty-one twenty-one. The problem is, right now, we don't have the funding to pay these, we still need to approve them. We're waiting for the grant money to come in.
So we need a motion to, to pay this upon receipt of the grant money?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, that was in stereo.
Nikki gets it, she's close.
Uh, discussion. So we don't know when this grant money is coming in.
It's been applied for.
Yeah.
Now, we say it's applied for, does that mean that we're gonna be kidding the grant, or we're not sure?
We've been awarded the grant.
We've been awarded the grant, we're just, Barton and Le Judas has put in the required paperwork to, um.
Okay.
To get it.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye. Uh, report from the superintendent. I have Mike's report here. Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions. We did have one water main break last week. And then a lot of shut offs with seasonal residents wintering. Been repairing some equipment, getting a lot ready for winter. Yeah, I, you can see at the bottom, there's a lot of work to be done, as always. Any questions at all, anything you want me to share with Mike?
No. On the winter parking pay. If people don't move their vehicles at nighttime, is something done to them?
Well, they, they can be towed, I think that he often leaves notes on them, saying that they need to, they need to move them, but I mean, they can be towed.
I know last year, there was a vehicle that was parked, all went wrong, and it was never, nothing. He might have had a note on the car, but there's still nothing ever happened.
I know he's gone to doors and knocked on doors and said, move your car. Do we have repeated offenders? Well, there's the one that Chuck's talking about, um.
And there's.
But otherwise.
Does Main Street include agents in them?
Main Street?
Yeah.
Well, no, that's state.
Main Street is state.
That's the state, that's the state, but, but still, I mean, the people do take their cars off of Main Street.
Hmm, not totally.
Like we said, that's the state, it's not the election. I'm sure that everybody deals with the same.
We did have one repeat offender for a while, but I think they're, they're not.
I think they moved.
The house is altering, basically. For a while, yes. It's not something we ignore though, let me just say that, yeah. And there aren't very many offenders.
No, there's not.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I know.
A lot of them, Mike, has their phone number.
Yeah.
I know, I know they did have issues plowing sometimes last year.
Yeah.
And even cars were parked on the sidewalk. A few places, so.
Well, they go to, they go to, he calls them or they go to the door and they, he has awakened people before, saying, move your vehicle.
Yeah, I mean, when they're out there, when they're out there plowing in a snowstorm, these are not things that they should have to be dealing with, you know?
No.
It's, yeah, you can't, yeah, you can't effectively do the job, and then if they're parked on the sidewalk,
we can't get the sidewalk plow through.
Right.
Yeah, so they, they were, they are dealt with. Except for the, a couple of exceptions that you're referring to.
Yeah.
Which I think were dealt with, but I can't answer for Mike. Anything else? Nope. Okay. Uh, correspondence?
Tips funding information from New York State DOT, an email from Rebecca Drake requesting reduction on water bill.
Right. Uh, new business, we have the twenty-twenty-four election. All right, twenty-twenty-four election, Village of Champlain. Whereas the next village election for offices of the Village of Champlain, New York, will be held on March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain must designate by resolution and publish offices which are to be filled at such election. In the terms thereof, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined the following offices to be filled and be voted thereupon, with the terms of such offices respectively noted as follows. Trustee term two years, trustee term two years. Be it further resolved that as required by election law fifteen dash one zero four parentheses three parentheses A, notice of village election shall be given at least four months prior to election date, and that the office to be voted upon be included in the notice. This resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a motion to approve?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, the parking ban, I said that in my report, but just to say it again, November first to April first, from two a.m. to six a.m. The holiday fest, um, that will be on December ninth, Saturday, December ninth, uh, in the morning at eleven will be the kids' activities. Twelve-thirty is our annual candy cane hunt at the playground. And four-thirty will be visits with Santa, gifts for the children, free hot chocolate, maybe some music or some singing, I don't know, whatever, whatever else we decide to do. Does the board have suggestions on other activities you'd like to see on that day?
Do we, do we know when the parade is gonna be, the lights?
Oh, the parade of lights, oh, I should have mentioned that. The parade of lights is November twenty-fifth, uh, six p.m. And it's being organized by, um, the Champlain Fire Department. So they're contacting Sally Jarvis or Lori Brink to get into that parade. Thanks for bringing that up, I meant to mention that.
Yeah, it just seemed so early this year.
Well, they, they wanted the Roberts truck. And so they, and so Sally booked that, um, and it was on November twenty-fifth.
Yeah, they're all over the place.
They're really busy. So we do have that, and other people are signing up, and so it will be a really, really good time. And I thank them, I thank them for doing that.
Yes.
They, they do a great job. Anything else with the holiday fest?
I know we've had high school students playing instruments before.
I thought about contacting them again, to see.
It was nice, I, I enjoyed that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, if not, maybe we can, if we can't get, could always ask the chorus at school.
Mm-hmm.
You know? Um, that might be easier than people playing instruments because of your fingers freezing.
Yeah.
Um, but maybe the chorus could come and do some Christmas music?
Yeah.
I'll double check.
Life is always so, so nice.
And it's nice to involve the kids.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right. That's great, I will reach out to them. Any, anything else? I mean, we always have a good time and a good turnout. Okay, well, if you think of something, shoot me an email, I'm looking forward to it. It'll be fun. We have the, uh, the email from Rebecca Drake, regarding her situation with the, with the water. Just a minute. So, we, we have a policy in terms of, um, credit for sewer, um, and this does not fall under that. So, she, she is asking for, um, a break on the months that they had water issues. It doesn't fall under our, that policy. Um, I do think we always need to know when residents feel that their water is murky, dark yellow, and had black soot. So I think that's, you know, something that we need to be aware of.
Was, uh, was it ever found out what caused this?
Well, um, Mary has, I don't, I don't know if you have those near you, Mary?
I think part of it was, that was the time that, that the water was not being softened, because there was, one of the, one of the pumps wasn't working, so it had to be done manually, it wasn't being softened, and part of that is that it pulls things out of the pipes, iron pipes, more.
When there's no softening.
And that might have contributed to that situation.
Okay. I think, um, yeah, I think it was, I think a lot of it was that, so it was stirred up more due to the, the lack of the soft, softened water going through, and so it was pulling other stuff off the pipes.
And we tried to let people know that.
Yeah, and we did respond, I mean, the village did respond to her. The DPW went out twice, I believe.
Yes.
Um, and I think her PRV was also swapped out.
Yeah, the second time they went over.
Uh, the pressure was, it was also swapped out. Because if there's low pressure or high pressure, that does affect the water that's being pulled in. So they did, they did respond.
Did we know if it got better after replacing that?
I don't know if.
We've heard nothing.
Yeah. Yeah. We have heard nothing more from her, um.
The software went back on, in line to online as well, so.
Right.
Yeah, when the soft, softened water came back on, I think it probably improved.
The water was a little off too for a while, but.
No, how, how long did this go on for?
Couple of months.
Her, her situation?
Oh.
You mean?
Yeah.
Well, she, she contacted originally June nineteenth and July second or third, and third.
Yeah, she's like, looks. So that would have been a couple of weeks.
It would have been a couple of weeks.
Yeah, three weeks, that sounds about right too.
Yeah.
And I would imagine it depends where you, where you're situated in the village. Like, we saw no difference.
Oh, I didn't.
And we started our, our softener, our personal softener back up again.
Oh, you did.
And, because we still had it sitting there, because it wasn't being used, so after a little bit, when we knew it was going to be a while before it was coming back, we started ours again. But I, I know other times when the people have complained about water issues, it, it, maybe it's just where you're situated and the pipes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, I didn't have a problem either, but you, you, Prospect, you did.
I did, yeah.
It was yellowish or something.
It was yellow, yeah.
Yeah. So location does make a difference. So, I mean, I want to be able to respond to her. What, what's, uh...
Well, like you said, there's no, not, that's nothing that comes under our policy as far as reimbursement. So I don't know what we can do.
That's correct. It doesn't, it doesn't. Um, I would just say that, I mean, for residents watching this right now, I, I think we need to know when their water is of, you know, yellow or whatever, murky. I mean, we do need to know that, and we do want to respond, we obviously care.
Right.
These, these are, these are the people that are getting the water. And, and they're paying for good water. So we need some kind of procedure, at least of notification, which is what she did.
Right.
And then some kind of response.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, I don't think we can, we, we can't refund anything because we don't have, we don't have a method to do that.
No. And it, it's... You know, it's not like the sewer where you can prove that, you know, and I, and I'm sure, you know, everything she's saying is true, because there were, you know, Nikki had issues of... And it, and it could be where you're located in the village. But unfortunately, if we set that precedence, then we've opened Pandora's Box to a lot of things that every time somebody had an issue, unfortunately. The sewer's so much easier to deal with.
Yeah, you know, I do want to say that the water was still tested daily, and it, and, and it was fine.
Right.
It was fine, so we, we were not sending out water that was not fit to drink.
Right.
But, of course, when it looks bad, no one wants to drink it or bathe in it. I would just encourage residents to let us know as soon as they see something like that, so we can send out the DPW to check it out. All right, I will, I will send her a message. Thank you. Um, let's see, so I'm through the new business. Um, I need to have, um, an executive session. So could I have a motion to close the regular session?
Second.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and a, uh, motion to go into executive session? And a second?
Aye. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. Um, just to take the, the one piece of paper with the information about this. Uh, may I have a motion come out of executive session?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to go back into regular session?
So move.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, um, I need a motion to, um, to pay these invoices to Barton and the Judas that are outstanding, um...
So move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Mayor McCuttrick.
Hi.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks for, uh, writing that out so clearly for us, yes.
At this point.
Yeah, that, we completely agree, yeah. Uh, old business, we have the dog law, and again, it's going to have to be tabled one more time. I'm still working on getting the the paragraph from the lawyer.
Just, we're just waiting on one paragraph.
Well, that's what he said at the meeting, that he could reference the town law in a paragraph, and that we could put that in our code, and that would suffice. So that's, that's what I'm waiting for.
Has he forgotten about it?
Well, no. There, and there, there are some other circumstances, I believe. So I'll, um, I'll try to reach him by phone. I mean, I have been trying to reach him, but I'll try to reach him by phone, um, this week, and make sure that we have that before the next meeting.
Yeah, that's... Sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. I know, we've waited a long time.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want to see a dog law sitting there and have something happen, and we don't have the information we need to have.
I know.
Our ducks in a row.
Yeah, believe me, I have a couple of concerns that we really need that dog law in place.
Exactly.
Is there any other old business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?